I will now call the March 5th, 2018 Blue Springs City Council Meeting to Order. We're gonna have you stand with me, observe a moment of silence, then we have Scout Troop 4175 from Blue Springs/Green Valley will come lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Let me give you some instructions. As we stand, you can start making your way up so you can stand and face the flag. When I turn around to you and look at you, that's when you will start to pledge. Clear as mud? All right, let us stand and observe a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you Scout 4175. Come back and see us again. I want to welcome you in attendance, as well as those that might be watching on cable TV, to tonight's City Council Meeting. Next, we have the Consent Agenda unless their items be full, accept the motion for approval.
Stand move.
Second. Roll call please.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levison.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously.
Next, we have a public hearing on Forcia Interior Systems Incorporated Industrial Development Project in Chapter 100 Bonds. We're gonna go to Mr. Stunbaugh.
Mayor, the city has the following exhibits to enter.
Once you get done.
To the record. We have two exhibits, Council Information Form with Attachments, Public Hearing Notice to Taxing Jurisdictions dated February 13, 2018, and Bill was planned for industrial development project attached to Exhibit A and form of trust indenture, bond purchase agreement, lease agreement equipment, and lease agreement real property. Exhibit 2 is letter dated February 27, 2018, from Gerald W. Robinett Supervisor, County Tax of the Missouri Department of Revenue. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Thank you. Mr. Stunbaugh, on behalf of the city.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, members of council. As we talked about, the public hearing today is at the request for the industrial development project for Forcia Interior Systems, Inc. We've got the ordinance approving the plan for industrial development for you today. It also authorizes the issuance of the Chapter 100 Bonds for that project. So those related documents are gonna facilitate a real property investment of about $36 million in personal property, equipment investment, to operate the facility of up to $33 million. It'll result in a, in two series of taxable industrial revenue bonds to be issued. The bonds will be limited obligations of the city and they're payable solely out of the lease revenues that we get from the company and the developer respectively. As I said, the ordinance authorizes the issuance of the bonds entering into a trust indenture with the trustee, authorizes us to execute the purchase agreement with each party with Forcia Interior Systems, Inc., and Landmark Blue Springs as the developer on the real property side. The city's ownership of the site through the lease agreements allows it to be tax exempt for the period of the lease agreements. Those lease agreements are set up to run for a period of 15 years. The pilots or payment in lieu of taxes would be paid in the amount of 50% in years 11 through 15 on both the real and personal property. So they're similar with the only exception that the equipment is gonna be acquired over a series of three years. So each acquisition year will get its own 15-year period on the equipment side. But again, 11 through 15 of that would pay 50% pilot. Staff used this as a targeted use of the Chapter 100 Industrial Revenue Bond Tool and it provided needed savings directly to both the developer in this instance and the operator to allow us to secure the investment. We did provide through our legal counsel the required plan for industrial development that includes a cost-benefit analysis to the taxing jurisdictions, as well as we connected with each of them to give them a summary of the project as soon as we could in that process. The rest of the materials and kind of performance measures were included in the development and performance agreement we did last week, but I'd certainly stand for any questions as well. We have Rich Wood and David Martin with our team of Gilmore and Bell that handled the plan and the bond documents. If you have any specific questions for them.
Are there any questions from the council to Mr. Stunbaugh? For those that don't know, Forcia Interiors is a company that will be locating in Blue Springs. It's gonna employ 300 people starting out, which we're very pleased to have in our city, especially in a time when Harley Davidson is talking about closing and losing jobs and also proctoring gambles. So this is continuing to be a great opportunity for the city of Blue Springs and the surrounding areas. So we'll go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in support of? In support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? We'll close this public hearing. Who would like to introduce it?
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4552, an ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project and authorizing the city to issue two series of taxable industrial development revenue bonds in an aggregate maximum principal amount not to exceed $69 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of acquiring, constructing, and equipping an automobile component manufacturing facility in the city, and authorizing the city to enter into certain agreements and to take certain other actions in connection therewith.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
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 Discussion. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All the same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4552, an ordinance approving a plan for an industrial development project and authorizing the city to issue two series of taxable industrial development revenue bonds in an aggregate maximum principal amount not to exceed $69 million for the purpose of providing funds to pay the costs of acquiring, constructing, and equipping an automobile component manufacturing facility in the city, and authorizing the city to enter into certain agreements and to take certain other actions in connection therewith.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call please.
Councilman Levison.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4721.
Next, we have a public hearing on a Tax Increment Financing and Economic Development Incentive Annual Report. And then we're gonna go to Ms. Cates.
Mayor, the city has.
I keep trying to get ahead of myself, aren't I?
The city has one exhibit to enter into the record. City Council Information Form with Attachments, Notice of Public Hearing is published in the Examiner on February 3, February 10, February 17, and February 20, 2018, and Tax Increment Financing and Economic Development Update Presentation. This is all we have to offer for the record.
Now, Ms. Cates.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. This is the fifth annual update on the tax increment financing projects and other economic development projects within the city, including the South Area Neighborhood Improvement District and the land bank of Blue Springs. These updates ensure compliance with state statutes that require an update every year, every five years for each TIP. By providing an annual update, which is what we do, we will meet this requirement and also provide more frequent updates on the status of our TIPS. Several reports are prepared on an annual basis that include information about the city's TIP projects and other incentive programs. These reports include the TIP Annual Report, the Adams Farm Bond Update, the NID Bond Update Report, the MRCRC Annual Report, and the TIP one-page summary. After this meeting, I will send out one email to all of you that has all the reports in one place, so if you ever need them for reference, you can find them in one email. Also mentioned at the last council meeting during the audit presentation, there's a new footnote in the city's annual audit. It's footnote Number 12, and that is a requirement from GASB that describes the tax abatements that have been approved by the city. This footnote describes individual projects and the annual value of that tax abatement. And so you'll see details about the city's Chapter 100 Bond projects and the 353 redevelopment projects, and then also the TIPS. The annual TIP report, which was handed out to you tonight, is available on the city's website and is due to the Department of Revenue each year on November 15. And the format that is used in that report is the format that's required by the state except for the pictures which we add. The guidance for the requirement of this public hearing is Section 99.965 of the Missouri Revised Statutes. Each year, we do this presentation anywhere from January through March, and I think one time we have it in April, and we just schedule it for whenever the schedule allows and when we have all the reports completed for the audit. The next slide, the next two slides are maps of our incentive districts that we provide an update on the city's website each year so that if interested citizens or you need to find out the boundaries of these districts, you can go out there and look at those. And these districts include TIPS, 353 Redevelopment Corporations, TDDs, and CIDs. In addition to this map, we also have maps on the city's website that show all the different sales tax rates throughout the city. So if you are in a CID or a TDD that has a sales tax rate, you can see what the impact of that is for shopping in that district. This slide is a little bit different from last year because it now includes the Kohl's Distribution Center Chapter 100 Bonds that were approved in 2017, as well as the MRCRC District map. So these are all these incentive districts are included together on the website. For Chapter 100 Bonds, updates from 2017 include Meyer Labs. They paid off their Chapter 100 Bonds early and closed in November 2017. So that is when that property went back on the tax rolls. As part of the Chapter 100 Bonds, the property is placed in the city's names, just like for Forcia that was just approved. And then once those bonds are paid off, it goes back into the company's name, and then the full taxes are back on the property. Also in 2017, we had Excelgent closed. That Chapter 100 Bonds were approved in 2013. So there's a few years left on that, and we're evaluating options of how to deal with or address that remaining tax abatement. And then, as we mentioned, in 2017, and I believe it was in March, the city approved $7.5 million with the Chapter 100 Bonds for Kohl's Distribution Center. And that was for capital investment and equipment and mechanical controls at the distribution center. The total projected value of that abatement over the term is $305,000. We also had several changes and additions to Chapter 353 Redevelopment Corporations, All Around Main Center Redevelopment Corporation in 2017. Ordinance 4673 adopted and approved amended and restated Main Center Development Plan. It specifically removed Project 11 for the CrossFit Gym at the old post office because the work had not been completed on that project to qualify it for a tax abatement. And it also revised the process we use for approving projects in MRCRC, that we don't have to do a project number each time that the council approves the project and approves the development agreement, but we don't amend the plan each time. Ordinance 4676, which was approved in, let's see, I don't have the date here that it was approved, but it was approved shortly after the changes to the plan by Ordinance 4676, which added a new section, 805-030, to the city code that authorized a 50% credit for building permit fees, building plan review fees, signed permit fees, water tap fees, water meter and installation fees, and sewer tap fees for projects within the MRCRC. And shortly after that was done, we approved two more projects in the MRCRC. The first one was 4683, which was approved dwellings-by-design project that is the building of eight two-story homes in the downtown area, and also approved a five-year tax abatement on those homes. And those are currently under construction. And then Ordinance 4699 was approved on September 15 for the East 40 Brewing Project that you also approved the liquor license for on the consent agenda this evening, and I think is expected to open this summer. The next slide is an update on the TIP districts that we have in the city. There's six active TIPS within the city limits of Blue Springs and 13 different project areas. This chart includes the district, the approval date, incentive amount, type of financing and incentives are used, are included on this report. Tax increment financing is limited 23 years from the date of activation, and the activation date can be different than the plan date. A project must be approved within 10 years of the approval of the plan. There are currently only two project areas that are not activated, and they are within the Woods Chapel TIP and will expire if not activated this summer. So we are currently working with the developer to see if those projects will be activated before it expires. Other actions related to TIPS in the past year include Ordinance 4636 that approved the issuance of the taxable bonds for White Oak Shopping Center and the Costantino's Price Shopper. All the, the Price Shopper was open and operating in October of 2017. And then we've also got new businesses there, including Johnny's Tavern, White Oak Dental Group, and St. Luke's Convenience Care. The other incentive approved this year was for the Eagles Ridge CID. Ordinance 4649 approved a CID and one sets sales tax on a grocery store. That project has not started yet, but that would be a grocery store there in future. Future projects where we've approved funding agreements or that have been in negotiations after the time that this report was completed were the funding agreement for South Outta Road, Strautze Zuki. That one is not, have any activity on it at this time. The funding agreement with Topstar Fall Creek was just approved at the last council meeting and will be having public hearings and amended agreements to consider at the next council meeting. And then the development agreement with Forcia that was approved at the last council meeting, bonds were approved this evening, and then upcoming planning approvals in the near future. Some information about the Neighborhood Improvement District, as a reminder, it was in 2009, the city issued $18.7 million in limited obligation bonds for the NID sewer improvements. That project actually started construction in 2006, and we issued temporary notes in 2006 and 2007 with the final bonds issued in 2009, with special assessments to be repaid over 20 years. The 2017 assessments were added to 686 parcels affecting 424 different property owners. There are currently 685 active sewer-only accounts in the NID, 316 are rental, and 365 are homeowner accounts. In comparison, in 2011, that total was 252, so it's tripled in seven years. Out of the, all of the assessments that have been placed on the property tax bills, 2.4 million remains unpaid, and that's out of a little over $12 million that we have billed to date. Of those properties, the current land bank properties have an outstanding value of that amount of 1.4 million. So the 2.4 million that are unpaid assessments, 1.4 million of that has been transferred to the land bank, those properties. And upcoming on here in the orange, those are the Excel Bank properties that are scheduled to be transferred to the land bank in 2018. They've had unpaid assessments for at least three years. The land bank of Blue Springs itself was established in March 2013 by Ordinance 4429. It currently holds 39 properties, 12 are for sale. The remainders are side lots or remnants. Anything that's for sale is listed on the land bank's website for sale. And since its inception, the land bank has deeded seven properties to the city and sold five other properties. Those are all the comments I have on our update. Anyone have any questions?
Are there any questions? Councilman Culpepper.
Yes, Your Honor. The Eagles Ridge, the TIP for that grocery store, is there a sunset when we have a TIP open like that that hasn't been activated?
That one is in a CID only, and so it is only, goes into effect once the CID board has had its first meeting and approved the sales tax, and they have not done that yet. So I don't think there's any time requirements in the cooperative agreement that says it has to be activated within a certain amount of time, but it can only be activated with the building of a grocery store.
Right, thank you.
And what else? Councilman Fowler.
Yes, Your Honor. Again, thank you to Mark Stunbaugh and everybody that has worked hard on the Forcia project. That is amazing. That's probably once every 10 years, you get to approve something of that magnitude. So that was an incredible amount of work, and we just went over the history of all these other incentives that have been out there, great efforts. I think the one that surprised me on here is the Woods Chapel. That, according to the original date on here, plan approval was July 7, 2008, and you just think that with that kind of opportunity and time, something would have happened out there. So I know we, everybody is trived with great enthusiasm, but that one is still one that's just a surprise that it's not taken off.
If I'm not mistaken, I think, I know that initially there was an environmental issue over in that area, and I don't know if Chris or someone can, can address that.
I knew they.
We'll go with Chris.
Since it's my district.
It's your district. Why don't you explain that?
Mayor, there was a environmental issue. It was the wetlands that were between Woods Chapel Road and the back of the west property line. However, those have been, were mitigated in one plan. Unless the plan changes, it should be able to move forward. So I too am surprised that nothing has filled in there.
They got approval from the Corps of Engineers as part of that process.
So we'll continue to keep our fingers crossed that someone will see the need to do that.
Right, and I guess you did mention there was like a sunset on this one coming up in this summer? Is that when it is?
Yeah, it's 10 years after the plan was approved. If the project hasn't been activated, then.
So that was July 7, 2008, so 2018 will be up. Okay.
You know what else? Seeing none, we'll go to the public. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak in support of? In support of? Opposition to? Opposition to? Close this public hearing. Now, our city clerk, I will inform you, there will be no reading on the next three public hearings, so I will not make an error in going straight to the presenter. But I would accept a motion that we continue public hearings on Item 7, 8, and 9 until the March 19 city council meeting.
Stand move.
Second. All in favor, aye. All the same sign. Motion carries. We will move now to Item 10, which is a presentation by the Prairie Township Fire Protection District, and we will welcome Fire Chief Larch.
Your Honor, council, thanks for inviting us out tonight. As you know, South Blue Springs residents, this, there's been some issues down there with Prairie Township. I've been serving Prairie Township as their fire chief for the past two and a half years. We got a new board of directors, and they decided to go, and we approached Laota One, which I'm the fire chief over there as well. So I've been shared between the two. We decided we'd like to attempt consolidating the two districts together to make one larger district, and that new district would be the Southern Jackson County Fire Protection District. We're calling this strength and unity because two or more, you're just stronger than one group. So let's quickly go through this and what it means for the citizens in Southern Blue Springs. It's within Prairie Township Fire District. So this just shows you the current logos and we'll be going into the Southern Jackson County logo in the middle if this was successful April 3. So what we're proposing, we're proposing the fire districts of Laota One and Prairie Township to consolidate into one larger fire district to better serve the emergency needs of our community. Over the last two and a half years that I've served with Prairie Township, one thing I've done different is I've looked at the data, I've looked at response times, and I'm acknowledging those issues with this consolidation. We have a great plan put together, and immediately after April 3, we can start resolving some of those issues and have a greater impact after January of 2019. So we're gonna take it to the polls, and one of the first things is, shall Laota One and Prairie Township consolidate into one larger district? And that district to be called the Southern Jackson County Fire Protection District? And this would expand our abilities to provide our constituents with quality emergency medical and fire protection service. Not that we provide horrible service now, we just need to better that service that's provided in a more timely fashion. So question one, and this is pretty much verbatim, and you guys are pretty versed on the lingo, so. Question one is the ballot language for the consolidation of the two districts into one, and that would set our taxing levy of 74 cents per $100 assessed valuation for the general operating levy, and 30 cents per $100 assessed valuation for EMS or ambulance service. That is the lower of the two current voter-approved levies, and that's Prairie Township's current levy. There is some rollbacks, but as you know, if things don't hit the books right, that number could roll back up next year. So that's question one. Question one has to pass on both sides. Has to pass in Prairie Township's Fire District and Laota One Fire District for consolidation to occur. So question two, as you guys have been talking, we're gonna be seeking general obligation bonds, and I do have some bonding people with me tonight if you have any questions on those. This question would be, shall the Southern Jackson County Fire District of Jackson County issue its general obligation bonds at the amount of $8.265 million for the purpose of constructing, furnishing, and equipping a new fire station, including purchase of any land, and the purchase of firefighting apparatus, equipment to serve the area of the newly consolidated district? Approval of this question is expected to impact debt service of 15 cents per $100 assessed valuation on real and personal property. The authorization of this bond will only be effective if the consolidation of Laota One and Prairie Township does happen. So question one does not pass, question two is a moot point. And that's to construct a station aside from the current two stations that we have. And the 8.265 is what the 15 cent debt service gets us. Question three is, shall the Southern Jackson County Fire Protection District of Jackson County, Missouri impose a sales tax of a half percent? This is a current tax, it's already out there, and it is subject to the new provisions of the state law with the quarter cent rollback, where the 50% has to be given back of all sales tax revenues that are collected. And again, this one is not effective, the sales tax is not in effect if consolidation doesn't happen. So question two and three are dependent on question one as a yes vote. So how will this help the citizens of Southern Blue Springs? Increase fire district coverage for the southern portion of the city of Blue Springs within the Prairie Township Fire District. This is where we can make an impact on April 4. If we get a yes vote on April 3, the Laota One Fire Station is considerably closer to the southern portions of Blue Springs that Prairie Township currently serves. That eliminates, we make quicker response times there. Ultimately, we need a new station at 12th and Y to reduce those response times where we want them to be. That station would be built on a piece of land that we're currently working with the city on right now, trying to get a lease agreement. We do have some drawings, if you can click over to the southern. So this is actually essentially part of the parkland that was purchased. This is kind of the front, three to five acres will be taken up, approximately three acres of that land to put the station on. As you can see here, let's go this way. This is just a preliminary drawing. It's gonna house, or this will become our headquarters, where all the administrative staff and, including on-duty personnel. It's three drive-through bays. It's roughly about a 14,000 square foot fire station to serve Southern Blue Springs area. All right, we'll go back. Thank you, sir. Come back. So that's what the majority of the bonds will be used for, is that big station to meet all the city codes and restrictions and meet our needs as well. We've already talked about the improved response times. We believe we can initially cut those times considerably, almost in half, but putting that new station up there is gonna make it even, even better because it's approximately mile to mile and a half from most of the area that it'll be serving. We're gonna be increasing staffing level over what Prairie Township and Laota One currently has. We'd have to hire a minimum of four new people, depending on what assessed valuations come in, we're looking at four to seven to staff that new station. We're gonna update our equipment. Laota One's fire truck's gonna need replaced, but the majority of the updated equipment is gonna come in that new station. We're looking at possibly purchasing a ladder truck, and there's gonna be an ambulance up there as well. We're hoping to get the ladder. There is a, there's a cost to the citizens, but we're gonna improve the ISO rating. We're confident and comfortable saying that ISO rating's gonna go down to an ISO Class III. We think we may be able to get some parts of it down to a Class II, so that'll help offset any tax increase that might come. We'll have multiple-level response. Three stations, we'll be able to handle multiple calls at one time or a single alarm structure fire on our own before we need mutual aid. Current, we have to call mutual aid after our first call. Improve community education. We have some educational classes that we're gonna start teaching. Obviously, if we're not duplicating resources such as fire chiefs and other administrative positions, it's more cost-effective to the citizens than us alike. It's a safer environment for the citizens because we can get the emergencies much quicker and the firefighters alike. We don't have minimum, or below minimum crews going back to the fire station responding to the next call on their own. So that will give us three full-time career fire stations throughout that will serve Blue Springs and the rest of the Prairie Township and Laota One. Blue Springs and the rest of the Prairie Township and Lotawanna Fire Districts. So the tax impact, the tax levy will return to the lower of the two voter-approved tax levies, which we a dollar for per $100 assessed valuation. We'll need bonds issued for the new station, as well as the apparatus and equipment updates. And a half cent sales tax would be implemented for all commercial sales of hard goods within the new district boundaries, and a large portion of that tax would be on non-district residents, as you guys know, people traveling through help pay for it. So as you can see in this slide here, in 2017, these were actually September of 2016 numbers that we put together. The combined assessed valuation of Lotawanna and Prairie Township's $237 million. That levy increase, as you know, tax rate is taking out four decimal points, is .1530, which rounds down to the 15 cents. The two districts combined together have a maximum bonding capacity of $11.85 million. So we're not taking out more than what we need, we're taking what we need. So for those citizens in your Southern Blue Springs area, depending on the average cost of their home, a $200,000 house market value, the tax impact would be $58.13 per year or $4.84 per month. And that is it. There's some contact information if anybody has any questions. I would gladly answer any of them right now, Mayor.
I thank the Chief Larch for that. Are there any questions from the council? Councilman Edmondson.
Chief, if you don't mind, what's going to be the combined square miles that you're going to cover when you combine both together?
The two districts combined together will become a 50-square-mile district.
50-square-mile, okay. Thank you.
Councilman Fowler.
I'd like Councilman Culpepper to go first.
Thank you. As you all know, I have been working trying to get a fire station in Councilman Fowler's in my district before I was ever a councilman. I worked on it when I was, some of those years that I was on the planning commission. And I feel like this is the best solution. We need to have protection for those people that live in Southern Blue Springs. We've had too many fires, we've had too many close calls, we've had too many people that could have lost lives because we didn't have the response times that we needed. So with this new station, we'll be able to better serve the citizens, the residents of Southern Blue Springs. So I am very pleased that this is going forward.
Councilman Fowler.
Yes, Your Honor. Second everything Councilman Culpepper said, I know you, I know you told me that 26 years ago that you wanted a fire station down there, so.
Yes, I did.
Chief, thank you for your service to being Fire Chief of Lake Lotawanna and to being a Fire Chief of Prairie Township. You gave us probably a lot of information here, and I'm sure a lot of it has to be disclosed, I mean, communicated for the ballot issue, but boy, this is just so simple. If you live in Southern Blue Springs, you get a fire station for less than $10 a month. In my history, they've not even had a chance or an opportunity to vote on something like this. This is, this is unprecedented. They, if you live in Southern Blue Springs, this is definitely a yes vote. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I want to personally thank Chief Larch and the Prairie Township Board of Trustees for working with us over the last few months to get us to where we are.
It's been a pleasure, thank you.
There have been countless meetings.
Yes.
And, and I think it's going to be very good. Again, we talk a lot about fires, and I've consistently said, that's certainly important. You don't want your property to burn. But probably equally, if not more important, is medical services. It's having an ambulance that's going to get you to the medical help that you need, and people on those ambulances that can start the process of saving a life until you can get them to the facility to do that. So again, I think the residents in this district, when you're talking about their ISO, you're talking about their insurance rates going down. In most cases, you're absolutely right. The increase in whatever the levy will be will certainly be covered by the savings in their insurance premiums. So it almost becomes a no-brainer.
Yes.
But we just hope that the people there understand that the message is being understood and digested to the point where they realize the benefit of it. So we just want to thank you and your Board of Trustees for, for your work.
We appreciate working with you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, that will bring us to Merrill announcements.
Yep.
Well, did I got another?
Yep.
I am, I am trying to rush and get you folks on tonight. I'm pushing this thing. And it's not a night where you've got any award shows on either. Okay.
Good.
Well, next we have an introduction reading of Bill 4551, approving the final plat for Blue Springs City Hall.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill Number 4551, an ordinance approving the final plat for Blue Springs City Hall.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
The second.
Second.
Discussion, in favor of I.
Aye.
Both same sign.
Second reading of Bill Number 4551, an ordinance approving the final plat at Blue Springs City Hall.
Move the bill be approved on second reading, given the appropriate ordinance number.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Kayler.
Aye.
Councilman Levisay.
Aye.
Mayor Ross.
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance Number 4722.
Now, can I go to Merrill announcements?
No.
Well, before I get to my Faustafunder, Chief Muntz, I know that right now we're going through the Kalia evaluation, and I understand that we have some people in the audience tonight from Kalia. Would you like to introduce them?
I would be honored to, Mayor.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have with us Lieutenant Brad Biller from the Bowling Green, Ohio Police Department, and we also have Mr. Larry Pincak from the Naperville, Illinois Police Department. He's the accreditation manager there. And they're both in town this week till Thursday morning or Thursday afternoon to do our annual onsite assessment portion of our Kalia re-accreditation process. As you know, we're a nationally accredited police department, so every three years, we have someone come out onsite to make sure we're doing what we say we're doing and reporting to them what we're doing. So they're going to be talking to people and rubbing elbows and checking some of our files. Also, if I may, on Wednesday night, in this room, at 5:30 in the evening, they're doing a public hearing. So if anybody wants to come out and speak in favor of or opposition to, as you say, to the police department, they're welcome to attend.
Thank you, Chief. And gentlemen, we want to welcome you to a great city, on the move and on the right track. And certainly, we're very proud of our police department, and I'm sure once you're done with your assessment, we will continue to be one of the greatest accredited police departments, not only in the state of Missouri, but in the nation. So thank you for being here. Let's go to Faustafunder. We just finished up the month of February, which is recognized as Black History Month. But for those that don't know, the month of March is considered Women's History Month. And so for the month of March, we're going to be highlighting some quotes from ladies that have made tremendous contributions in the world. Tonight's come from Martha, I mean Margaret Thatcher, and I quote, "If you want something said, ask a man. If you want something done, ask a woman." End quote. Don't have anything else to come before us? I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
It's our second.
Second.
Call in favor of I.
Aye.
Both same sign. We adjourn.